Good evening, everyone. The time is 5:29. All mics are hot and we are broadcasting on all platforms.
Having the appointed time of 5:30 arrived, I would like to call Tuesday, August 26, 2025 Committee of the Whole to Order. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, would you please take the role?
Yes, ma'am. Alderman Cox, here. Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams. Alderman Rockford.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman Nitriano.
Here.
Alderman Carlson.
Here.
Alderwoman Connolly.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Madam Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. I would accept the motion for approval of August 12, 2025 Committee Meeting Minutes.
Go move, Madam Chair.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Corporation Council, I'm aware there's a need for executive session.
Yes, we're gonna need to go into executive session under Exemption 2C5, the acquisition of property.
Second.
Let's go.
Welcome back, everyone. We're going to remind you that the mics are hot and we are broadcasting on all platforms.
Motion to reconvene?
So.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Let's wake up. All those opposed? The ayes have it. Are there any presentations?
No.
No presentations. Next, we have ordinances table or remaining in committee. Mr. Clerk, could you please read those ordinances? Oh, I'm sorry.
Ordnances table to remain committee, 2025-247 and 2025-281.
Is there anyone who would like to remove any of these ordinances for consideration? There is none. Moving on.
Ordnances for committee considerations, 2025-338 is an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing the execution of a contract UE 26-04-15, roadway lighting with Graybar Electric Company, Inc., with Wesco Enexter, Inc., for a total amount not to exceed $1,076,023.20 for electric transmission distribution and operations department for the Electric Transmission Distribution and Operations Department for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2025-339, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of 12 refurbished voltage regulators from Sunbelt Solomon LLC in the amount not to exceed $68,004.50 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2025-340, an ordinance approving professional services agreement with Optical Control LLC in the amount not to exceed $92,592 for the tuning services for the Dahman Unit 4 for the Office of Public Utilities.
For consent.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2025-341, an ordinance authorizing the approving agreement with the implementation of AAR package and the term conversion for the SCADA EMS system for the Open Systems International, Inc., DBA Asphalent Tech Digital Grid Management in the amount not to exceed $437,184 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Public Works, 2025-342, an ordinance approving a plat for large-scale development of Cedarhurst in the Springfield Independent Living Codages of the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2025-343, an ordinance amending Chapter 5, Title 5, Chapter 51, Article 4, Section 51.31 of the 1988 City Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to the Residential Building Plumbing Modification Reimbursement Program.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
General City Business, 2025-344, an ordinance authorizing a decrease in the number of Class D liquor licenses by one due to the closure of business by J&amp;J Operations LLC DBA Causes Pizza and Pub located at 4441 Ash Grove Drive.
Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2025-345, an ordinance authorizing a decrease in the number of Class D liquor licenses by one due to the closure of business by Kyle Restaurants LLC DBA Lucetons on 4th located at 517 South 4th Street.
Much for consent. Second.
Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2025-346, an ordinance authorizing payment in the amount of $185,000 to the Richland Community College DBA Making County Law Enforcement Training Center in FY 2026 for the Springfield Police Department.
Move for consent.
There is no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2025-347, an ordinance amending ordinance 065-02-25 and authorize an additional payment of $60,000 for the total amount not to exceed $120,000 for the MGT Impact Solutions LLC retained Dallas Whitford to provide financial assistance services for the Office of Budget Management and Planning and Economic Development through February 28, 2026.
Move for consent.
Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2025-348, an ordinance authorizing three-year contract for RFP CS 26-14 for linen and uniform rental for all city departments with Vestas Services LLC for the October 1 through 2025 through September 30, 2028 in the amount not to exceed $240,000 for the Office of Budget Management.
And there is no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2025-349, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of proposal under RFP CS 26-16 and execution of an agreement with Hustle and Heart Sports Performance LLC for the purchase of city-owned property consisting of four parcels in the amount of $10,000 for the Office of Budget Management.
Motion for consent?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I would ask y'all to pray.
2025-350, an ordinance authorizing professional services agreement with Two Versus, Inc., to assist in the request proposals in selection of Pharmacy Benefit Manager, PBM, effective March 1, 2026 through February 28, 2027 in the amount not to exceed $25,000 for the Office of Human Resources.
Motion for debate?
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2025-351, an ordinance authorizing payment in the amount of $85,200 to Keith Air, a former Springfield firefighter, in settlement of workers' compensation claim in case number 16-WC-031791.
Move to consent.
Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2025-352, an ordinance authorizing payment in the amount of $17,466.86 to Andrew Watts, a former Springfield police officer for settlement of workers' compensation claim in case number 24-WC-021119.
Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2025-353, an ordinance authorizing payment in the amount of $49,265.10 to Isaiah Cooper, a Springfield Police Department employee for settlement of workers' compensation claim and for case number 24WC-017549.
Move consent.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2025-354, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the Springfield Park District and the City of Springfield for acquisition and subsequent transfer of the Robin Roberts Stadium.
Move consent.
Any discussion? I know we ain't got no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Is there any unfinished business? Is there any new business? Of course there is. I would like to thank our zoning manager and director Fuchs for the hard work that the Public Works Department did in Enos Park with SIU School of Medicine. We had about 100 students come out to be split up between Enos Park and the Pillsbury area and we had amazing time and Brady did an awesome job of making sure that we got everything to one area and helped us on his time off. So, thank you for that. And I just wanted to recognize a young lady in the audience, I think Hialeah. She is our new fire, our new assistant fire chief, Julie Plunk. Alderwoman Connolly.
Thank you, Chair. I also, Director Fuchs has something for your staff. It's not very specific, but I was told constituents mentioned that they'd seen an accident in Springfield. It looked kind of ugly and there was a city truck, Public Works truck, that was nearby and they pulled over and parked behind the accident just to, with their lights blinking, to provide awareness and help direct, move traffic around at a busy time. And just wanted to say thank you to whoever it was who did that, Director Fuchs. They didn't have to, but they helped kind of just keep things safe and quiet until our police department or fire department could get there. So, just want to send out some thanks to them.
Thank you, Alderwoman Connolly. And now, Alderman Carlson.
Sorry, real quick. I just, I want to give a shout out to a couple of folks in my ward. You know, we've talked about the grass cutting and speeding the process up. I'm glad we passed it last week, but up until then, we did have a couple of neighbors that had a problem house in West Chester. Because of the bureaucracy, the grass was two and three feet, two and three feet long. But we did have a couple of neighbors who, or one neighbor, who decided to take it upon himself and mow it. So, I want to thank him for doing that. And then, we had a, we had a fire on Greenside Drive the other night. There were six fire trucks who showed up. I want to thank the neighbor who saw the car in the garage on fire. Something happened with the, with the resident of the house. He pulled the resident out of the car. He was having problems starting it. Two minutes later, the whole thing blew up and went on fire. So, I want to acknowledge the neighbor who, who did a, you know, good Samaritan. This was like seven o'clock, eight o'clock at night, just happened to be at the right place at the right time to help out his neighbor. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Carlson. There is no other further discussion. Mr. Clerk?
People to request to address the City Council, James Johnson.
Come on up, James. Now, you know you live from the five with five minutes.
I wrote it down.
Okay.
So, you know it's important when I write it down.
Okay.
Come here on a committee's meeting. So, it's something serious. But since y'all in the mood of thanking people, I'mma, I'mma start off with thanking all the men and women in the unions who are working on our streets and dealing with the public who don't want to get off their phones in the construction zone and don't want to slow down. So, I'mma thank all those people who keep our streets or creating new streets for us. Now, that's that.
Thank you.
Now, another thing I got an issue with is the police and fire want to thank each other for doing their jobs. I don't really get that and I don't know why that's important. But if y'all want to thank the police and do news press conferences for what they supposed to be doing, then okay, I guess that's where we are now. But it don't make no sense. If that's your job, just do your job and we can move on. We don't need no special medias and press conferences for all that. But I ain't come here for all that. I came here for this. Now, if you a believer, you ain't got to worry about what I'm about to say. And if you a non-believer, if you a Peter, then you're gonna be in trouble and you probably need to pay attention. Because I'mma speak to all the poor people in the community, to our black caucus. Y'all can include yourselves, but you're not written down. To the black and brown, to the homeless people. For all you ones who don't vote or didn't vote. And for all you non-working people, you're gonna start suffering. And before I go into it, I'mma give you, uh, two decades ago, that's 20 years ago for you slow ones. There was a storm called Katrina in August, 20 years ago, in the Ninth Ward. There's a documentary out there. You need to watch it. You need to see what we're gonna see here real soon. Back 20 years ago, they sent the military into New Orleans and those people got displaced. And all you hear about right now today is some man want to send the military in the certain states where he's eroding history. And he's doing some unprecedented things. But let me stay on my notes. Because what's happening in our country right now is unprecedented. It's not cool. We being led by a dictator. And to our governor who fights for the unions in this state and the only one that I heard speak up and tell this man, we don't need him here. I want to thank you, Governor Prister. Keep doing what you doing. We gonna back you and, 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 and we gonna do what we have to do to keep our state safe and our people safe. Now, for our people in, that I just mentioned, there's a radio Roland Martin. It's somebody we all need to be listening to because he's kicking facts about what's happening and what's going on. Of course, we don't have black radio stations and we don't get the media and attention. We don't hear it because of the way things are set up around here. And so, I'mma leave you with this because my time is running out. A black man can shoot a white cop that lives and can't get a free trial here. But a white cop can kill a black woman and you say he can't get a fair trial here? Come on. Stop it. TV 20 wants to talk about this case every day, but they don't say nothing about that. This man ain't gonna get no free trial, uh, fair trial here either. Now, in my last 20 seconds, and I don't care who you support and who you stand for, but for all you mega people, America gonna be great when God walk this earth again.
Thank you, Ken. Be nice, Ken.
I'm always nice. So, another day, another week, and another good, good reason why we should really take to heart my suggestion of a real hard, long-drawn-out process of talking about a landlord registry and what it could mean for this town. I assume everybody here's seen the Illinois Times article, right? If you haven't, I encourage you to go check it out. The Wyndham's probably gonna be tied up in court for quite a while. I wouldn't expect to see any changes over there anytime soon. And why would that be? Is it because we sold to an out-of-state landlord who has no good business running a building? He didn't have the funding to renovate in the first place and trying to rely on millions of dollars of city incentives that weren't there? Does that seem weird to any of you? Does that seem like a solid business plan for renovating a massive hotel that's decades behind updates? But yet, we sold it to him and now it's just gonna sit dead in the middle of our downtown like an anchor. What's the solution for that? That's way out of your guys' hands. These are FBI-level investigations. How long you think it'll take? How long's Old Town taken? I bet it eclipses it. And that's the kind of behavior we're gonna keep running into if we don't take serious the kind of people that take possession of the buildings in our city. I know there's a lot of opposition from realtors and residential owners that run landlord-level sort of apartments and complexes, but I don't frankly care. If we actually look at the problems that are endemic to the buildings that are not getting inspected, that are being overlooked or handed off to landlords that don't even have the money to do what needs to be done. If you don't have the money to renovate a building, then why are you owning it? What, do you think someone's just gonna bail you out? What kind of place do you think you live in? That's not a business plan, right, Ralph? I mean, come on. That's ridiculous, right? And that's the kind of thing that we handed off, the biggest building in our city, that people will see from miles away. And what do we have to tell them? It's gonna be nice and dark for a long time to come. And that's embarrassing. I bet it embarrasses you guys trying to explain that situation to an out-of-towner. It's embarrassing. How did it get that bad? How did it reach that level of mismanagement that we have an out-of-town owner who sabotaged his own building to the tune of $12 million that he's not ever gonna pay off because he didn't even have the money to renovate the place in the first place? We should have never sold that building to him. We should have never allowed those incentives to be promised by a previous administration. That's the kind of thing, though, that we see as a desperate plea to help prop up downtown. Like, I saw your name in there, Mordock, for the parking level agreement. They just stopped paying, didn't they? And they were like, well, we don't charge anybody. We need to keep paying you guys. What kind of business runs that way? We're just gonna stop paying you? I mean, that's insane. But that's the kind of landlord we let take over a landmark in our city that will now stand as a testament to the failures of management within it. And we could have prevented that by being more adamant about who takes possession of our landmarks, our buildings, the things that matter to our city, instead of brushing it off because it's gonna be a hard fight. It will be a hard fight. That landlord registry will not come easy. I promise you, you will upset people you know, you care about, that you are friends with. But when you talk about the well-being of the city for decades to come, I'd ask you to consider what kind of friend would ask you to back off something like that? Just like I said last week, if there's rules, we should all follow them. Now, you've seen me come up here. I may have taken a few extra minutes or a little bit of time if you let me, but if you want me to follow the rules, we'll end up following them. They have to be because that's what they're there for. And if not, there's punishments. But the punishments we're gonna have is a dead building in our city, burnt-down blocks that could have been prevented by real inspections on this building that was decades behind code. You know where my radio station's going? I won't tell until I launch it, but I can tell you where it was gonna go. It was gonna go in that Adam Street building that burnt to the ground. And quite frankly, I got to see the inside of that building and it was a travesty. And that wasn't the gentleman who owned its fault. They took over what had been a building that had been degraded for decades. Holes that ran through multiple floors from water damage, long-term neglect, and a failure to update it. Would yearly inspections have fixed that? Would inspections and required coding updates have prevented that electrical wiring from not only burning down that building, but destroying one of our landmark restaurants? Moxo ain't coming back. They make way more money on the west side. They give us a little satellite hub down there. But that's the kind of cost we're gonna have to the downtown we're trying to save. And it happens all around the city. There are buildings all over that are just as neglected, just as overlooked, run by people who have no business owning them, who don't have the money to update them or take care of them. And quite simply, as a city, it's really, really worth thinking about that. When you leave tonight, look at that building. Remember what it was.
And think about how long it's gonna be till it ever will be again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Alderman Williams?
Ken, I got a question, if you would, please. I'm confused and this is before my time.
You're just fine.
So, you have information saying that the city sold...
So, the city didn't sell it, but in terms of those negotiations, we were a part of that. Like, the Wyndham didn't just transfer hands without anybody having any part of that. That, that is a huge part of our city and part of the sale was the incentives that Langfelder told the guy would be involved in that. Now, that's another administration and I'm not gonna speak for Jim, but that's in the newspaper stories about it, that that guy said flat out that he was promised those incentives and Misty's quoted us when she came in. Those incentives were not available anymore. And that's a legitimate thing to do because those incentives shouldn't have been promised anyways. That kind of development should be something that there are groups out there, and it may take longer, but quite frankly, you shouldn't be handing it off to the first person that's willing to take it and then have to incentivize them to do it. There's basic incentives, like when we brought Walmart and gave them a tax break. I mean, that's the kind of thing you do to bring businesses in, but to the point that you're talking tens of millions of dollars as part of that ownership group coming in and taking that ownership, that was part of their agreement.
Okay.
And I don't know that that was like a formal contract or anything, Roy, but that's been cited in, in like public information and stuff.
I appreciate it.
Of course.
I just didn't realize it. I do...
Well, I looked into it a little bit.
I, I want you to know that building is special to me. It, it's my very first job.
I worked there too, Roy. I was a banquet chef.
I was seventeen years old. I worked at a Bunkie's Coffee House on the first level, and it, and it was going on. I mean, it was when it was the farm thirty. I mean, it was just a beautiful place to work.
We had the Manhattan Grill Room and...
Ken, Ken.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want you to know that I care, and I believe there's others up here do, that do care, even though it is appearance like we don't, because, because the public can't see anything, so, you know.
Well, to be fair, though, I just, if I may real quickly say, I don't think any of you, whether we agree on stuff or not, don't care about that. I think it frustrates every one of you to drive down anywhere in this city and to see a giant black tower in the middle of it. That is an eyesore, and it's a public health danger. If somebody gets in there, how are we going to find them? If a fire starts in there, what would we do? You know what I mean? Like, there's a lot of, lot of issues that arise from that, and then with the court cases, and now an insurance fraud claim, I mean, that's going to be a nightmare.
Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you. That was, I, I believe that was a private sale, Ken. We, we had nothing to do on the sale to Rajabi. We, we had nothing to do with it. Now, when Mayor Langfelder, he, he offered some incentives, and I think at the time the council didn't feel that those incentives were, were, were proper, not whatever. We didn't...
We had an hour debate.
Yeah, we had, we, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, two hours.
Anyway, so, um, but that was a private sale. We've never had any, now, the states way back, they, they offered, I guess, loans and stuff like that. City hasn't had anything to do. That's a, that's a private-to-private, uh, sale, and, and we don't have anything, as far as I know, we don't have anything to do with, with anything like that.
And I want to say...
But can we?
Hold on, Ken.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I want to add on to what Alderman Hanauer said too, and as my colleagues just corrected me, so it was more than an hour debate, and that was the first time somebody had asked me to, uh, put my head on straight too, or told me how to think. And I, I challenged him because we asked for, um, financial statements so that we can see that you could see your project through and know that you could execute it, and we determined that it wasn't there at the moment and was wanting him to come back, but that seeing that article today made me realize too, I'm glad that I stuck to my ground and I got my head taken off in the community for, right after, but now, look at the evidence that has came out against somebody who did something malicious. We cannot talk about it because it's under investigation, so I'm only stating what we all read in the paper today, but this just helps people to be educated about things when things come forward, read up on it, ask questions, call your older persons, and, and get filled in.
But do, but can we agree on the statement, though, that if we had better oversight and control over who we allow the buildings to be taken control of, because that's part of what those registries can't offer, is that out-of-town ownership is highly supervised and even restricted from certain ownership groups, as well as over-ownership, where it's like not only would their financials not be okay to have taken ownership of that hotel in the first place, but their behavior in terms of three failed zoning changes, where you can't even agree what you're going to do with that building, which is creating even deeper issues. I mean, those are the kind of things that a registry would help us settle on before we got to this point, just as a note, to touch on what I said. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Ready? Aaron Cahill.
Good evening.
Good evening, y'all. No idea where it went. That's fun. Ooh. Sorry, y'all, trying to find this. I didn't print it out tonight, so... Evening, council members. I stand here tonight with a heavy heart. Across our nation, voices are grow, the voices of power are growing louder, more threatening, threatening to bring force to our cities, threatening to sweep aside our most vulnerable neighbors. Former President, President Trump's threats to descend on Chicago, paired with his dangerous words about criminalization of homelessness, are not just political talking points, they are words that ripple like shockwaves through communities like ours. And here in Springfield, we have already felt that ripple. Just weeks ago, two Guatemalan neighbors were taken from us, abducted by ICE, by alleged ICE agents, right here in our own city. They weren't strangers. They were part of us, men and women who worked, who prayed, who had families who loved them. Now, those families are broken, left wondering if they will ever see their loved ones again. The fear that swept through our immigrant neighbors after that night is chilling. Mothers are afraid to take their kid, children to the doctor. Workers are afraid to show up for their shifts. People are afraid to call the police when they need help. Fear has silenced the very people who most need their city to stand beside them. At the same time, too many of our own residents remain unhoused. They're not statistics, they're people whose faces we know, veterans who served this country, children who deserve stability, seniors who deserve peace in their later years. Yet, instead of compassion, the national narrative is to paint them as criminals, as blight, as disposable. Imagine being told that the only thing your city, your state, your country sees in you is a problem to be cleared away. That is not, that is not who we are. Springfield must not be a city of fear. We must be a city of hope, a city that says we will not turn, we will not stand by while our neighbors are torn from their homes. We will not stand by while families sleep under bridges. We will not echo the cruel voices that tell us these lives do not matter. We can choose differently, and we can choose housing over handcuffs, we can choose care over condemnation, we can choose to see the humanity in every neighbor, immigrant, homeless, struggling, and say, you belong here, and we'll fight for you. This is our moral test, and Springfield must rise to meet it. I don't know if y'all have been keeping up with the, uh, goings-on nationally. I'm sure some of y'all have, but Trump decided that D.C. needed to be taken over by the National Guard and the three-letter agencies in the executive branch. For the record, D.C. is at like a thirty-year crime low over the past several years. Chicago is at a crime low over the past thirty years. Louisiana has a higher crime rate than Illinois. Missouri has a higher crime rate than Illinois, and these are national statistics, like, you can look this up, it's, it's not a surprise really, but they're wanting to put troops on our streets. We can sit and argue legality of it, because it's not, all day long, but what we need is people out there telling them, no, go away, we don't need you here. What we need is our leadership saying, don't send your boys here, they're not welcome here. We need voices. That's what we need right now. And the fact that I've heard, from the time that those two gentlemen were kidnapped in this city till now, the city still has not said, where are our people? Where did you take our migrant friends? Nothing. They didn't condemn it, they didn't say, hey, what the hell? These are our neighbors, why are you doing this? Chicago followed up with them, though. Chicago got all kinds of info on them. Chicago stepped up. We should have stepped up, y'all. There's no reason our city couldn't have stepped up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Williams.
Alderman Williams. Oh, you owe, okay. You got to take your thing off.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, council committee, uh, members. My name is Robert Williams. I'm here about a friend of mine's Friday, uh, brother got killed by a train like a week ago before that, out of Chicago, and he was, uh, out here right in the back, out of state of mind mentally, he was drunk, intoxicated, and mental health was nowhere to be found. They always telling y'all they doing this and doing that, and they ain't doing nothing. You know, all they do is ride with the police, they catch, get people, become they payee once you get on SSI. But just recently, not, not long ago, I ain't going to say no name, but it was a scene downstairs where a brother fell flat on, on the ground arguing with his mental health about his I.D. card, which he has the right to have. You know, she held on to his I.D. card for a week. These, these people ain't doing their job. I'm out here, I know what's going, people come to me. Whatever I do, I know I don't do everything right, but I'm doing me, I'm, I'm educated. You check up Williams versus Reed, ten forty, case number. I done filed plenty of lawsuits. I done won cases, I done got stuff overturned in the Southern Circuit of Appeal, you know? You ain't looking at no dummy, but y'all ain't helping me. And I want to give a shout out to, uh, Catholic Charity, because they going to give me a apartment. They said they going to pay my first rent and my deposit, you know? But yeah, uh, like I said, my brother, I ain't going to say his name, I ain't going to put him out there, but he was intoxicated, and y'all, and, uh, the people that know be getting these grants, the mayor stated when this first came to about, she said, where's mental health? Well, nobody here but this people on, on, on North Grand, they was here, she was the only one here, what's her name, Tamara? Tamika? Well, she was the only one here, but the next week, everybody and their mama showed up, excuse my French, but that's what happened. You see what I'm saying? But shit, I'm out here on the street, and I know I, I'm not perfect, I got my SSI.
Please watch your profanity. Please watch your profanity.
I, oh, excuse me. So, uh, back to what I was saying, uh, yeah, I'm here, I get SSI, and like I said, only people I'm giving thanks out to is God, Shannon, uh, Catholic Charity for putting up the deposit and the rent, paying my first month rent, and, uh, I want to thank Sean Gregory, right? Because when I needed them, they was there, and they still been there, no matter what, you know? But like I said, we need to get together, you know, we need to do something better for the people that's out here homeless, that they not just alcoholic, have mental problem. You don't see nobody sitting down there. One time I was here, this woman was out there in the front of the building with her pants down, didn't nobody go out there and help her? I sat right there, her friends in the back getting high off her money. I went back there and checked them, corrected them, said y'all should be up there with that girl. If that's your friend, you not going to leave her, forsake her, anything, you going to be right there, you going to get her back in a right state of mind, but they didn't do that. I laid there and took it upon myself, picked that girl up, that woman, pulled her pants up, fastened them and put them back on, and got the ambulance called over here and got hers treated. See, this is the thing y'all don't see, you know what I'm saying? My heart is in the right place, but y'all not. See what I'm saying? For every action, there's a reaction. I did twenty-five years for not raping nobody. A woman fell on, mouth fell on my genital, and that's real shit. I ain't got to take...
Excuse me, again.
They giving it to women. I, that's, it's Adam and Eve, not Adam and Steve. I love women. That's it, that all, and y'all have a great day.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.